I'd like to call the order of the October 26th meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call roll?
Mayor Edwards here. Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Micklin, Annie.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Reprovision.
Second.
Motion second approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none with council, please vote aye if you favor approving the agenda.
Aye.
Posnay, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have citizens' presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, would you check and see if there's anyone online? If there's anyone in the council chambers, please come forward and identify yourself for the record. And before we do so, just to remind everyone present, our operating principles are that we support the pillars of character counts. Endeavoring at all times remote and model principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Conducting our work, we expect everyone to follow those principles. Please identify yourself.
Very good. Good evening. Dennis Kelly.
And what do you have for us this evening?
Okay. So this summer, I had the golden opportunity to travel to Iceland. And I went with my oldest son, Dan, and his wife, Megan. And so have any of you been to Iceland?
Yes, I traveled through the airport. Does that count?
There's more, there's more to it than the airport.
I'm sure.
Yeah. So it's absolutely an amazing country, waterfalls, geysers, and it was really breathtaking. So anybody that's been, the other thing that you'll notice is the calving from the, from the glaciers. So there's a lot of spectacular sights, but it was kind of ironic that one of the things that caught our eye, and I couldn't help but think, coming back to Clive, is there a possibility that we could do something similar to what this small city, it's located in northern Iceland. It's about 62 miles from the Arctic Circle. And what they did to just kind of send a warm, friendly message to their citizens is they took a very simple stoplight and just made the red into a heart. And it was, it was, you know, it just kind of catches you because, you know, you're not expecting it. Excuse me. My daughter-in-law, Megan, had Dan go around the block and come back around and take a photo with it. But the question that I had in my mind was, is there any possibility that the city of Clive could do something similar to this? And the proposal I would make is that just one, just one single stoplight in the city of Clive with the open heart. Thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. I'm glad it was such a good trip for you to Iceland, but unfortunately, I think Matt can tell the council what our limitations are in considering something.
Happy to, Your Honor, as somebody who's been to Iceland for multiple days and can definitely tell you the waterfalls are beautiful. We've been engaged with Mr. Kelly. Staff has communicated. Unfortunately, in the U.S., we have a federal traffic manual for how these traffic control devices must function. And a big reason behind that manual is to ensure that the city has sufficient liability. If there's following the manual practices, these manual practices have been tested. One of the requirements for our traffic stoplights is for them to be circular in nature and/or arrows, no other shape is described in the manual. So as we shared with Mr. Kelly, unfortunately, that traffic manual that again is federally implemented is prohibits us from, from, from doing this, and we've shared that with him. So unfortunately, very much appreciate the sentiment, at least from staff's perspective, that isn't something that we would necessarily recommend, that we would be able to change out any of our stoplights to do that.
Thank you, Matt. Comments or questions? Wish we had better news for you.
Thank you. Well, I wasn't, I wasn't surprised by the regulations, but there's always exceptions to the rules. And in the times that we live in today, there might just be a possibility that the city of Clive could send a very powerful message to the world. We need to remember what's important. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. We appreciate it. Is there anyone here in the councils presenting on an item that is not on the agenda?
Your Honor, there is a group of folks on the line. If you'd like to get our attention here in the council chamber participating remotely, you can use the raise hand emoji bottom of your Zoom screen. There's reactions button. If you click that and then click raise hand, we'll bring you into the meeting. I do not see hands going up, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you very much, Pete. We'll now move into a presentation on our continuous process improvement, and James is here.
Good evening, mayor and council members, city manager, Matt, assistant manager, Pete, and all the members present here and online. I'm James Kuriandatul, Senior Network Administrator at City of Clive. Thank you for letting me to present 2023 Process Improvement for Technology Services. I have a small presentation, a slide. To improve the efficiency and improvement of the connectivity between the city and the Westcom agency, we have implemented a VPN tunnel between the city and the agency. The main reason we implemented on the top of the existing fiber infrastructure between the connectivity of the city and the Westcom that we had many incident, there is a disruption in the fiber and the connectivity went down and the public safety employees was not able to communicate with the agency. So with the implementation of the new IPsec VPN tunnel, if there is any disruption in the communication, we can easily switch the communication to the VPN over the internet so that the public safety employees can always use their software and the servers that are hosted in the Westcom environment. So so I have a slide that will show how to work this connectivity. This was the old diagram that we used to show the connectivity between the city and the Westcom agency. The line shows the fiber connectivity between the building. So the new connectivity shows here. So in the red dot, that is the VPN tunnel between the city and the Westcom agency. So if there is any interruption, interruption in the fiber, we can easily switch the communication over the internet between the agency and the city. So I can answer any questions you have.
So real quick, we, we have redundant fiber now because with the new Clive Public Safety Building, is that right?
There is no redundant fiber between the public safety and the Westcom.
I see. Okay.
We do have redundancy though for our own ISP connection with a secondary connection. We just have never had redundancy with Westcom. And so we've had a few instances where that there's some critical fiber routes, particularly in West Des Moines, that we have had issues where cuts happened. And then so therefore, the, the MDCs and the, and the public safety vehicles don't have that direct connection. And so now with the VPN, we now have that, that private VPN connection. And this is, this goes for all Westcom agencies, but this has been a really nice enhancement to not have to worry about being down for.
I'm actually shocked that there was no redundancy in a system like Westcom prior to this. So I, I mean, for something as important as this, I would argue that you need tertiary redundancy, which is what I thought you were, you were explaining to us.
Which is another layer that there is a physical fiber redundancy layer that they're also working on.
Okay.
Beyond the, the private VPN then gets us, buys us time to get us that additional hardware connection.
And I want to credit James and Dennis in particular, among all of the different IT departments that are represented or that are active in the Westcom constellation. They've been particularly active pushing this forward. A lot of it came out of the urgency around the cyber incident that happened a couple of years ago in West Des Moines. James and Dennis have really tried to keep the momentum with all the cities pushing ahead. It's led to really good improvements for our partners at, in Windsor Heights and certainly the city of Clive.
I think, I think that's great. Congratulations. I, I did like that you specified it was IPsec.
It's a side-to-side tunnel.
Yeah.
It's secure. It's in the network layer three. So yeah, trying our best to secure our network.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
And happy birthday. And happy birthday today, James.
All right.
Very rarely on your birthday, you get to attend a council meeting.
What a gift, James.
He doesn't need to stay.
Right along. Next, we have consent items.
Reprovision.
Motion second on our consent items. Is there further discussion? Seeing none with the council, please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? And consent is approved by vote of five to zero. Next, we move on to the action items on our agenda this evening, starting with a public hearing. And did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, the public hearing notice was published in the Des Moines Register on October 13th, 2023.
Very good. We're now in public hearing. Mark.
Good evening, mayor and council members. On October 17th, 2023, the city received two bids in response to the recently issued request for bids for a demolition project. Project includes demolition of four properties located at 1320, 1340, and 1371 Northwest 78th Street, and a commercial building at 7975 University Boulevard, which were recently purchased as part of the flood buyout program. The city's estimate for the project was $215,450. We received two bids. Pearson Dirtwork and Trucking Incorporated was $143,250, and Linco Incorporated was $224,538. Staff recommends awarding the project to Pearson Dirtwork and Trucking and Company for, or Incorporated for the contract price of $143,250. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mark Eric.
Mark, I always love it when bids come in under staff estimates right there. $72,200, pretty substantial large percentage there in the differential. Any reason why there is such a big disparity right there?
No, I did contact him personally before or after that opening.
And the scope of the project.
And verified that he has done a lot of work for Des Moines. Didn't seem surprised about anything or missed anything. Quizzed him a little bit, but he seemed like he's ready to go and didn't have any other questions. So the other company that came in a little higher is out of Minnesota. So I don't know. You know, they did send a couple of people down to look at the project, but they may have just been bidding pretty high again to get, get, get awarded and come down and do the work. So.
Staff's comfortable with this company?
Yes. Yep. Good.
Mark, has the asbestos mitigation been completed at this point?
Yes, it has.
It has. Okay. Okay. And then, so we expect this work to be done this year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Very good. All right. We had a, a, a few residents over in that area asking about that. So is the 7975 university, is that the old university photo?
It is not. That one's been taken down a few years ago. This one is the funeral hall.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's Brooks. Yep.
Thank you.
The notice to proceed, we're hopefully issuing on November 3rd or so. So it's going to start pretty fast.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Mark?
Move to closed public hearing.
We have motion to close public hearing, and we have a second. Further discussion before we vote on that, is there anyone in the chamber or online to address this on this issue during our public hearing? Seeing no one in the chamber and no one online, would the council please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? We've closed public hearing by vote of five this evening.
With the resolution approving plan specifications.
Second.
Motion and second on the resolution approving plans and specs. Further discussion, seeing none with the council, please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? And the plans and specs are approved by vote of five to zero.
Who's received the bids?
Second.
Motion second to receive the bids. Further discussion. Seeing none with the council, please vote, and will clerk please post that vote? And the bids are received by vote of five to zero.
With the resolution, where the contractor person, Dirtwork and Trucking, for $143,250.
Second.
Motion and seconds reward the contract. Further discussion.
I would imagine the price was under what it was anticipated to be because they're older houses with smaller windows rather than the larger window frame.
He just never lets anything go.
Alrighty, so motion and second, and I am hearing no further discussion. So would the council please vote, and the clerk please post that vote?
I don't very often have them both in the same room at the same time.
Oh, we had gotten to receive the bids a second time for some reason. I don't know.
Let me fill time a little bit on that window discussion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motions passed five to zero, awarding the contract. Thank you very much. Next, we have the possible second consideration of ordinance 1141. Doug.
Good evening. As you mentioned, what's before you tonight is second consideration of our proposed rezoning from general neighborhood commercial C2 to a proposed planned unit development, which would support multifamily residential at the existing Clive Hotel property on Hickman Road. Although the developer and staff are more than happy to, to dig into any specific questions you may have had on land use that we worked through quite a bit at the public hearing. The intent from my perspective tonight is to walk you through the proposed zoning change and development agreement, which is more around what are the minimum requirements for the site and building capacity? So not that we're moving off of the land use question, which we're happy to ask, answer questions about. But tonight, we wanted to walk you through a few of the specific areas in the zoning change that would need to be memorialized to allow for the multifamily use in the commercial zoning district. So without going through all of these, the couple of, of items that will need, again, a specific level of review on the proposed multifamily situation at that property would be to take the existing 120 hotel rooms and convert them into 120 multifamily dwelling units. So the current configuration includes some existing hotel rooms. In other cases, hotel rooms have been added together to either make one bedrooms or two bedrooms. But the current composition of the units would be the same as the hotel is configured at the moment. So with that, we would need to identify that smaller minimum square footage per dwelling unit would be acceptable. As we talked about before, the city's minimum standard today is 600 square feet. The smallest unit currently configured in the hotel is about 265 square feet. They do go up to over, over 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom configuration. In this particular case, we've outlined in the zoning change agreement, the minimum size at 265, and then identified the minimum size for the one bedroom, which would also be under the 600 minimum of the city standard. There was some question on whether or not there was a need to further refine this particular provision and identify the maximum number of studio units or to otherwise identify a average square footage per unit within the complex itself. Either of those can be easily added to the agreement if there's some concern that there'll be a dramatic change in composition of units over time. From SaaS perspective, it's unlikely that units will be taken from a two-bedroom or one-bedroom and kind of put back to the smaller original hotel configuration. So it's not really something that we were overly concerned with, but I do bring it up for your consideration if you feel like there is a need for that additional language in the agreement. Also, within this property, because it is a commercial property and going to a multifamily residential does require some, again, consideration of the minimum required parking for the site. A multifamily property in the city of Clive presently requires two parking stalls per dwelling unit. In this case, at 120 units, 240 parking stalls would be required. The site does not have the capacity to meet that requirement, even if the developer was willing to add another 40 or 50 parking stalls on the site. There's just not room on the land. This is a similar situation that we dealt with with the Sterling property and then frankly with other multifamily type properties. The two parking stalls per dwelling units seem to work okay for, if you will, garden suburban apartment complexes because there's nowhere else to park. And in a lot of cases, those, those units themselves are quite large and ultimately can have more occupants than kind of what you would otherwise think about. In some of these existing facilities and in the more established areas where there are some other opportunities and flexibilities with parking, it seems like a lower standard is prudent. So in this case, similar to the Sterling, we'd be recommending that the minimum requirement for the parking per unit be at 1.25 parking stalls per unit. So in this case, it'd be 150 parking stalls required. Presently, the site has approximately 180 parking stalls. But by the time we remove some of the parking to accommodate some additional open space for islands within the parking lot and tinker with some of the other configuration, we think we'll be down there, you know, somewhere about 160-ish parking stalls. So about 10 over the minimum requirement is, is where it's likely to come out.
Doug, real quick. So I, I think you started saying this about there's going to be some additional green spaces added with some of the spaces that are taken away.
Sure.
I, I would actually say, you know, if we could maximize that green space by going to that 150 number, that, that may be a way to get a few more. Like I know, I know the council last meeting talked about amenities for the folks living there. That might be another way to give a little more green space, maybe, maybe add a little bit more of amenity for outdoor use.
So yeah, again, just for references, Hickman Road to the north, hotel building here on the west side of the property and the existing commercial parking lot and the east side of the property. You know, presently, we're showing a few different islands being added to create some open space and try to break up that parking lot. There may be some other tinkering with some of the driveway and aisleways and so forth. There is a little bit of modification to the existing pavement areas to accommodate some additional patio area, covered patio amenity for the, for the residents. We've certainly kicked around the idea of, you know, are there opportunities to create some additional open space that would be advantageous to the patio area and to the proposed dog run area? Those are things that we could certainly continue to evaluate as we work through the specific site plan.
If, if you got, so you mentioned that patio area and the dog run that are kind of, you know, adjacent to one another. The, the stalls that are along that back row that are kind of separating like all across that parking lot, would, if you remove that whole row, would that still get us to the appropriate number of 150 or we, or would that dip below the 150?
I, I think if you're referring to this row.
Yep. Yep.
So there are going to be about 14 parking stalls roughly there. If you were to remove all of those parking stalls, we'd probably have a, have a tension point with meeting the 150. But certainly if you're saying, you know, could a few of the stalls be removed to make more green space around the seating area and the dog park, that, that's certainly a possibility.
So I'm actually saying get as, get rid of as many as you can without falling below that standard. And then that way you, you, you know, you could have a connector between that patio and the dog run, but you'd also have some additional green space, you know, adjacent to the dog run or maybe in front of it.
Yeah, I think again, if we're comfortable with the 150 parking stalls as the minimum requirement to the degree that we can look at how to create some additional open space and still maintain that minimum standard. I think certainly from my perspective, that's something that could be worked and certainly may make sense to do kind of in this location to add to the amenity. Again, I'd probably have to defer to developer a little bit to talk about any implications that it might have from his perspective.
And, and to be clear, just, you know, and, and yeah, I'd love to hear from them as well, but like if we can, if we can make that green space kind of flow into those islands there that are proposed, and then you just get, you have that predominant area there. I think that's, I mean, I know, I know there's still some spaces on the east side that would, you know, you wouldn't be able to take over that entire space, but at least take that first island over essentially, and then maybe like slope it down.
Yeah. Again, we'd have to, to evaluate that a little bit. The one thing that I know that again, once we get past this part of the process, if we do and get into the site plan, just even with these islands and kind of adding these impediments in the parking area, we're going to have to work through making sure that we can route the ladder truck, the fire vehicle in and around these obstacles. So it may require some, some tinkering, if you will, with the size and shape of some of these open spaces. And if, you know, I think it's unlikely that we're able to kind of eliminate the route.
Right. Okay.
Fire, that truck is going to have to take to this particular site, but certainly some opportunities that we can dig into with the site plan.
Yeah, anything we can do to maximize that green space in my mind.
Doug, what's the current stormwater management plan for this? Do we need to modify that at all?
The age of this property, there was no required stormwater management for the property. So presently, the entirety of the site is picked up in storm sewer and conveyed into the public storm sewer system. So until such time that there is a substantial modification on the site, you know, a redevelopment or the parking lot is going to be fully reconstructed, something of that nature, there would be no mandate to add additional stormwater management features to the site.
Rezoning alone wouldn't trigger that? I mean, that's a major change.
It, it could certainly be part of the consideration of the planned unit development. But the way that we have typically addressed stormwater management on existing sites, so again, regardless of the zoning aspect, but how we deal with existing sites, we have provisions in place that create the trigger. Once you reach a certain amount of disruption of the site, like I said, repairing or substantially replacing the parking lot or adding a, a building to the site, things of those nature, that's when the triggers come into place. But the routine maintenance that is expected on this, even with the, the kind of minor additions to the islands, they're not going to meet the thresholds of disruption of the site to trigger the additional stormwater requirements.
Other questions for Doug, otherwise continue?
Another of the kind of more unique considerations on this project is again, commercial building, commercial building signage. In our multi-family residential developments anywhere else in the city, we don't have building signage on them. They have some allowable monument signage out front, but not necessarily signage on the building. So in this particular case, because of the prominent So in this particular case, because of the prominence of the building, developers requesting that this property, although it would be multifamily residential in use, be allowed to maintain its commercial designation with respect to signage. And, and again, the other unique aspect is this particular property has a variance in place to allow for the larger signage on the west elevation of the building, the the large Clive Hotel and Suite sign that faces out to the interstate. So in this particular case, if you are going to allow for commercial signage on this building, they'd be allowed to maintain that approximately 144 square feet on the west face. And then they're allowable by right signage approximately 90 square feet on the east elevation. So again, a little bit of a unique circumstance for us in this case.
Doug, there used to be a monument sign right there that's no longer working. Does the applicant have plans to utilize that for branding for the hotel? And I'd also ask, what's, what's their plan for the, the new name that they'd like to put on the top of it?
Sure. In terms of those, there, there were two monument signs out along the Hickman frontage. Both of those signs were last seen, if you will, when the property was the Sheridan Four Points, which has now been a couple of decades. The infrastructure, the footing for those signs still exist. But they're not really in a configuration to be reused very well. So it doesn't mean that the developer couldn't find a place to do a ground mounted sign. It would be a smaller smaller size and not quite as high as a commercial sign would be. But there is some opportunity for signage. I think my conversation with the developer to this point has been the building signage, if, if allowed, would probably provide a greater value than the ground mounted sign. So it's probably unlikely that, that he would pursue ground mounted sign and it would in essence seek to create that value on the building itself, which obviously has much more visibility than, than a small ground sign along the front of your road.
Do we know what the new proposed name of this is?
I'm not sure if a snazzy name is, has been defined.
Yes, I got ideas.
Already have naming.
Flying sweets.
I, another, another point of discussion at the public hearing was around the crime-free multifamily housing standard. And similar to the Sterling, this zoning change agreement has the requirement that this property be included in that program. Developer has no problem with that and will fully intend to make the modifications necessary to meet the minimum requirements on terms of the fiscal improvements. And then the developer and the property managers are in the process of becoming certified through the program itself. They have been making headway with getting involved with the required training as well as getting connected with the program manager to get the site inspected and get the other engagement parts of the process completed. So that shouldn't be an issue for this particular property.
But Doug, you said, and I got hooked on this last time is you, you said that like the other one, they're going to participate in it, but they're not at the other one.
They are not presently certified.
Right.
They have made the requisite physical changes as part of the renovation package. The part that hasn't been completed is the required eight hour training, which they have made arrangements to take advantage of that next available training. And then they also have some engagement necessary to involve tenants with police activities to have conversations around how to have crime-free housing.
Unlike that last agreement we had, would this one have a timeframe set on it that they have to be certified? Because I'm not sure they would have moved to get certified if we didn't bring it up the last time on this lack of certification.
That can certainly be added to the agreement without much challenge. Establishing, you know, if, if the renovation process takes six to nine months, certainly requiring that certification be obtained within 12 months is probably reasonable.
Doug, on the, the sign thing, because this is a PUD, does that just kind of make this kind of a unicorn? So we can, we can kind of waive those things and or what does that do in the future when someone comes to us and says, hey, I want to, I, I've got an apartment. I want to, I want to have a sign on my building.
Right. So the rezoning process to a planned unit development does afford the city council the opportunity to create flexibilities that would not otherwise be granted by right under the zoning ordinance. So in this particular case, we are dealing with an unusual circumstance, a residential use in a commercial complex. There won't be very many of those types of requests across the city, just to kind of give you that piece of the flight, a piece of the, a piece of information. But yes, in this particular case, you, the council have the ability to decide a residential use in a commercial district should be entitled to X amount of signage.
And that would be the case in the future if we have a similar type situation where we have a PUD, we would have that discretion as well.
Certainly. The last piece that I wanted to bring your attention to is with respect to the parkland dedication requirement. Again, any new multifamily residential project in the city has an obligation to provide parkland to support the residents. And it's based on the number of units times the number of people per unit based on the city standard of 8.8 acres per 1,000 residents. In this particular case, it results in a parkland dedication requirement of one acre. Again, as I had mentioned, this site really doesn't have additional land to either allocate towards parking or to open space or to deed to the city. So in this case, we are looking for a similar arrangement to the Sterling in which there is an alternate resolution of parkland amenity for the residents rather than the parkland dedication to the city itself. The developer is requesting that in consideration of the improvements that they're proposing to make to the property, which include the lobby area includes the outdoor patio, the dog run, the dog washing station. Those types of amenities that are outlined on exhibit B of the agreement that the parkland dedication would be satisfied by the installation and maintenance of those improvements themselves. So those are again, kind of the highlights of the agreement. Certainly entertain any questions that you have on any of those particular provisions. If there are suggestions, recommendations, we can certainly incorporate those prior to third consideration if, if the project makes it that far.
Any other questions for Doug? I guess it might be good just to get consensus on the points he was making about parking signage. Does anyone have any concerns about the?
I do on a couple of them. The signage, I think you needed, we needed to decide, is it a residential or a commercial? Right. And that's where I sit. It's, it's one or the other. And we can't just keep going back and forth, dropping parking spots because it's commercial, it's residential or in a commercial and, and then taking this rule and applying it to commercial and this rule to residential is we're going to apply to residential or not in my opinion. And so not so sure I see some big giant sign for an apartment complex, you know, in the future. The parkland dedication, not so sure of the amenities for your folks inside your building and other places are the equivalent to a one acre park. Like to see what the price on a one acre park today dedication would be from the Hubble's project out west or something like that, that is significant dollars to the community into the residents around that area and that are living in there. So it's not just dedicated in other cases strictly for the folks in that building, right? It's an amenity for the area. Here we're saying that our private dog park, let our private lobby, let our private dog wash be the equivalent to a one acre piece of land. I have a, a big opposition on that as well.
Is there an alternative to that?
I think so, right? I think with.
Well, I mean, we don't have an acre to do for park, right? So I guess I'm just, yeah, wondering, is there an alternative?
So in terms of what is the value of that? If we were in Western Clive, looking to develop a multifamily residential property, the land itself would have a value somewhere of $125,000 per acre. So in the previous materials, you saw that was kind of the target is the parkland dedication in lieu of would have been pegged to $125,000. In this particular case, the developer is saying they've got several hundreds of thousands of dollars going into these improvements to help address the, the demand for recreational facilities for their tenants.
Could make their project viable, right? I would be more of the alternative is the 125,000 equivalency going right across the creek to a park we're about to build and spend millions on. It can be dedicated inside that, right? Right here. On one of those many amenities we're looking for, which is for them and for the community as well. But when you're saying for a lobby and for laundry facility and all those other things, those are amenities for the developer to attract folks, you know, not for the community or the whole.
Michael, I, I agree with what you're saying as far as it's different when you have community availability compared to something that is really, it's in a lobby for those folks, right? Even if the door was unlocked and other people could walk in, that's not going to happen, right? So, but you know, one thing that, that I, I remember talking with you about when I was asking questions is you were talking about how there's been discussion about a path along the Public Works building property, not the building, but on the eastern edge of that property. Is that something that the developer might contribute to? And then that way his residents get access to the trail more easily and other community members could use it to run up to Genesis, maybe if they're, if they're part of that club or something. I don't know.
Splurged on that photo.
So the hotel property I don't have enough screen to get to the green belt, but basically the green belt is right here.
Right.
And the greenbelt trail. It's about there. What we have explored as we've been evaluating the reconstruction of 111th, 114th Street is how do we continue to get more green belt connectivity and get connectivity up to what will be the continuation of the Raccoon Valley Trail on the interstate. One of the things that we have been considering is what does it look like to go right up here in some fashion? This is Public Works, so the land is, is the cities to work with. Genesis Health Club here, we certainly know that their patrons desire access to the green belt because they use other means to get there. So we think that there might be a partnership arrangement that could be had with Genesis to acquire, if you will, the necessary land to facilitate an access point. And then certainly with this development converting to residential, those residents could probably find good value in having connectivity to the green belts as well.
And, and there was discussion last meeting about the, the residents here potentially having access to Genesis as part of like a, you know, some sort of agreement or partnership.
And I'll let the developer kind of talk more specifically because I think they have come to terms on what that opportunity looks like. This particular trail access point is something that at this moment is still just in the internal staff thought process stage. We have not engaged or really intended to, to have an outreach effort to find out what the viability and value of the connection is. From SaaS perspective, we think that this may be an appropriate way to resolve some of the other challenges we had from trying to get a facility on 111th, 114th Street. But it would be a future effort. But the question of could this particular property's parkland dedication go to that facility? It's possible. It's just that it's not an absolute project right now.
Any, any idea what a prospective cost would be for a paved trail down to the green belt right there? Just had to ballpark it. I don't know the distance on it, just current trail standards.
I, I mean, that's going to be a $250,000, $300,000 as long as it's pretty straightforward.
Perhaps there could be a cost sharing or something of that nature move forward. I, I like, I really like the concept.
I like it. And I, I would advocate for adding to this exhibit B or whatever, you know, some additional green space in that back lot as much, you know, to the extent, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the council's position on that, but I, I personally would like to see that.
Let me just loop back to the items for which Doug needed input or we fairly comfortable with reducing the parking down to, I think, 1.25 some consensus on that. So we're good with that. And then crime free, do we think that that should have some parameters of completion? Are we good with that?
Whatever's realistic.
Working with aperture. Okay, so those two are, are good. So the question of the signage and the parkland dedication.
And I think maximizing the green spaces for Tom was saying as much as we can, keeping in mind the, the needs for the fire department. But as much as we can maximize that, I think is a, a good thing.
So it's like we do have some consensus on some of those. Other comments, questions? Again, what we're doing tonight is the second consideration, just the ordinance.
I'll move that ordinance number one, one.
I, I think we do need to though hammer out the parkland dedication. If, if there's a consensus to send Doug back on the parkland dedication piece of the 125,000 being the equivalent to a bank, right? For later use, either this trail or it offsets next door project because that money then could free up for a later project, right?
Right.
And then the signage needs to be sent back to Doug. Those two, I haven't heard a consensus of.
So Doug, is, is the parkland dedication, is it one acre or 1.25? I thought it was 1.25. Yeah. So it says, creation of additional 120 multifamily dwelling units, 1.25 acres.
Sorry. Yes. 1.25 acres at $100,000 per acre.
Okay, got it. Okay. Doug, you might want to mention too, what we've done previously. I know we did with the vibe property. We did a little something different with that one related to the parkland dedication as well.
The vibe was more or less kind of in the middle of what we're talking about here. So they certainly had a series of value-added amenities that they, they created with the property. Dog park area, fairly significant outdoor patio, lifestyle area, grilling, things of that nature. And then they also had a payment to the city of $50,000. So it was a set of amenities in exhibit B, if you will, and then a payment to the city.
Well, is, what is the thought on parkland dedication? Again, I think we're in consensus. We want to provide as much green space as possible. Are we looking at 125 that we'd set aside for future? What, what's the consensus?
Yeah, I, I like that idea for the trail specifically.
Me too.
All right. Seems to be consensus on that.
Well, I, I'd just tell you that I think we should give them the alternative that they don't need to provide those other amenities then. You know, to have it be comparable to what we considered with the vibe. I think it is relevant to think about some of the other opportunities that are close by, like the park that we're about to develop and that kind of thing. So there's as good a park access for that project as we'd see anywhere in the in city really. But I like the idea of having a payment that would go to a future trail or something, but kind of splitting the difference. I, I wouldn't necessarily say. kind of splitting the difference. I I wouldn't necessarily say we are requiring those other amenities plus requiring 125,000 if they would choose to do them like you were saying, it would be for the benefit of their property, they could still choose to do it, but not have a requirement unless we reduce the payment would be my preference.
And I'm proposing that the 125,000 be on top of the other ones. We weren't the ones that proposed the other amenities. They were on the sales pitch of changing it to a PUD, right? And so we've given them in as a trade of changing it to a PUD. They pitched all the other amenities. So we said, let's put that in writing so we don't have a bait and switch. Right? And that we're not losing those at some point. So they've agreed to that. The parkland dedication is on top of everything, what everybody else has to do and others have done that has then given us the ability to build this park across the street. So you've got to put your your money in it too, right? And you don't just ride from the past, you're riding from the current and the future as well and putting that money in to develop this park. So I'd say it's 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 very fair in the scheme of things of building out west or anywhere else that you do the 125,000. The other part's already been agreed to.
And so is that where you three are?
Yeah, I I agree with that. It's a good logic. It makes sense.
Okay, so we've got four or five council, okay, on the 125.
And and then if I could just ask about the signage to get.
Well, that was the last item.
I'm indifferent.
If if it sets a precedent, I I would have more concern. It sounds like we still have some like if something if something came down the road, asking for something similar, change the PUD, it wouldn't necessarily wouldn't bind our hands, so to speak, to do this sort of signage again.
I think of the words of Ted Weaver, it's a unicorn.
Right. It's a unicorn. Yeah. And if anyone would know what a unicorn, it would be Ted.
And I'm okay with it because this is a specific property. It's not like something we're going to see all the time. They've made a lot of concessions right now, especially, you know, with what we're talking about right here. It's a branding thing as long as it's done, you know, stylistically and tastefully, and I'm sure they do that. I I'm I'm okay to you know, kind of almost throw that bone right there to to do that. So that's where I stand.
And Susan, where do you stand on unicorns?
I think having a sign that's visible on the building is good for a building of that size.
So you've got four of five council members supporting the unicorn approach and now we'll hear from the developer.
Jason Grove, Grove Holdings. So one thing that that I'll say about this is I I developed this exhibit B because you guys were saying, and we I thought we were in an agreement that these units were small and we need additional space on this property. How do we manufacture and how do we create this space and this amenity for people that are here because they don't have the space inside of the unit that we were saying is is limited? So I said, okay, I'm going to go back to the drawing board and I'm going to try to figure out how do I carve out a space in the parking lot? How do I carve out this dark dog run? How do I make a fitness center? How do I try to get in agreement with Genesis? This is, this was more than I was anticipating to spend. This project does not move forward from right here, right now, if I have to do all those projects and 125,000. It's just that financially that doesn't work. So that's different than what we had talked about last time.
I do suggest listening to the last recording because I made a point of saying you've pitched all these things to us that you'll do. You pitched, not us. And I said, would you willing to put that in writing? And because too many developers have come in the past and said, we'll build all these wonderful things, right? And they and then they don't get to them. So.
Prior to that was our conversation about why the the units were small and how this amenity space would add to that.
You're already getting from a minimum of 600. That's a pretty good succession from us of of saying, you know, we've left you go less than a half. So I do take issue with that. You said, I mean, because those are directly, I was the one that said you've pitched these things.
I'd like you said it, but I didn't pitch it.
In your pitch, when you presented, it was pitched to us that we're going to do the this, we're going to do the lobby, we're going to do. And so I said, then let's put that in writing.
Yep, because we didn't have it in writing because I wasn't planning to do that. We were having that conversation saying these would be good amenities to add to it. And you guys were saying, well, was that something you would put in writing? Okay, I'll put it in writing. Let's let's do those amenities to create this space.
Jason, real quick, I think I think part of it comes down to, that was a discussion, like you said, it was about because those units are so small, we wanted to see some additional amenities for those residents. But the parkland dedication goes beyond that. It's not just for those residents, right?
Right. But there's a precedence from our previous property that we were in the same same scenario where we said, hey, this property is this small footprint. It doesn't have all this green space, so let's add to the amenities and take it. And that's a reduction off of the parkland fee. This is this exact same scenario. And then this property right here. And that's what I thought we were agreeing to do.
And here's my problem with the precedents we've been talking about. It's just been thrown back in our face. And now we're talking about doing more precedence with with signs on buildings and oh, it'll never come up again. You just used vibe against us. So we should have never given the precedence to vibe, which we wouldn't then have just heard the argument we just heard. So now we're going to double down on precedence? You know, like.
I just know this has been, this has changed from our last conversation from last meeting.
Well, I think the parkland dedication has always been in here. That's never changed. That's to every developer.
So I would propose is that you and Doug go back, have a conversation, figure out what the fair amount is. Maybe it's not a firm 125, but based off of some of these things taken into like we did at the vibe. Some of these things taken into consideration, what's the correct number that could be done towards that?
I I I'm I'm not opposed that. The only thing I would add is that I think if we're going to put that on the table, I I would almost say what amenities come out to try to keep that parkland dedication higher, right? Like to you know, if if it's something where that mail and package room has to change because that's, you know, that that's an expensive item. You can take that out and we can, you can use that towards that parkland dedication. I'd rather see that. But but.
And and I'm sorry, I'm kind of with you too. We want to work with you on this and maybe we don't have to do all these projects right there. Maybe we can pull some out to come up with that number. I too would rather have a parkland dedication to the trail that benefits everybody. You know, do you need, do we need a fitness center? When you could come up with a greenway genesis? Right. Maybe yes, maybe no. I don't know, but I think everything's on the table. And we're not set in stone with these projects right here. I understand the cost constraints. That 125 is is a big add on that perhaps, you know, obviously changes your business plan right there. So I think things should be on the table.
Like you said, you know, 77,000 for the fitness center. If you've got an an agreement with Genesis to allow the residents to use that facility, I would say, and this is just me personally speaking again, I would say I'd rather steer residents towards there for the fitness. And you can take that 77,000 towards, I mean, that's that's a big chunk of the 125.
That's a win win right there for everybody, for for you guys, Genesis in the city.
So do you have any other points you want to make?
Well, so we we are in an agreement with Genesis that the tenants can use the property, the same agreement that's in place today. There's Sharon parking for the space or for the usage of the facility. I I don't know what the long term plans are with Genesis. I know they're potentially going through a remodel. I that I know that that property has changed hands multiple times. I have a concern that if I don't create the space, potentially I lose that opportunity if a new buyer, new owner comes in. If change to that contract takes place, then you know, I'm 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 a little stuck at that point.
The council is suggesting is for you to look down the list and work with Doug, prioritize and figure out what what makes sense.
One, one comment on that last piece, like you're you're saying that if that deal that Genesis falls through or what, you know, variables out of your control, then you need to have a fitness center for your residents, right? But but that's a need that you have for your residents, right? So you you kind of the market dictates that, not us, right? We're we're not saying you have to have a gym. What you're telling me now is that that's kind of what the market expects. If it's not going to come from Genesis, it has to come from somewhere else. So in my mind, that's maybe not as far as a sunk cost, but it it kind of like the market dictates that, right?
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be at the property. We have multiple properties around the area that don't have gyms in them. So it's it's a nice, it's a nice feature to have for for the amenity space for apartments and for residential living. I just don't know how long that that contract would be in place and you you have capital available at the beginning of a project, not necessarily in the middle of the project. So.
Again, what I'm hearing from the council is to look down the list, lift the priorities, work with Doug and figure out how much can be put toward parkland dedications, that first statement.
And green spaces, yeah.
All right. So other points?
I don't believe so.
Anyone else have any comments? Otherwise, what we're looking at is second consideration.
I'm moving that ordinance number 1141, having been considered by the council be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Most in a second on the second reading.
I would be voting no tonight with my uncomfort of the future on this.
All right. Thanks for identifying that for us. Would the council please vote and clerk please post that vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
So that passes by a vote of four to one and Councilmember McCoy cast the dissenting vote. All right. Thank you all. Next. We have item number three. And Matthew, this will be an interesting proposition for us, I guess.
Actually, it's resolved.
What's that?
Actually, the issue is resolved because of the termination.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, Matthew.
Chance to speak in months and thanks, Christine.
Matthew, would you please address the council on this item?
The next item.
Yeah, where's Neil?
She's right. The next item is your consideration to revoke the liquor license for Taps Pub owner Will Hildreth. I won't rehash all of the history there, but in the days leading up to this, Will has finalized a sales agreement. He has sold his ownership interest in Taps Pub and he has also surrendered the liquor license effective October 31st. So you may let this motion or this action die for lack of a motion. You may vote to rescind. You may consider revocation. It's up to the council.
So would it be cleanest to rescind? Madam Council.
There could be a connotation that you should not have made the motion to begin with if you're rescinding it. So I would actually think that there would be, it would be better to just let it die.
I'll make a motion.
To let it die?
No, make a motion to approve the retail alcohol license renewal. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, license suspension, revocation of Taps Pub.
No, he's he's gonna, he's gonna die for like. It's procedural.
Where's Neil? Where is Neil?
Hearing no second to motion to approve that dies for lack of a second. All right. Thank you all. Now another interesting one.
Windows.
I don't think so, not tonight, but it is interesting that you're coming to talk to us about alcohol.
Yes. All right.
Blake.
Okay. Do you need to state the agenda item first?
We're we're here to talk about the retail alcohol license renewal for European flavors. So tell us why. Action needed here.
All right. Good evening. So as part of any retail liquor license renewal or application, I review the fire department inspections of that facility. For this one, for European flavors, they had not had theirs, their inspection done this year, so I actually went out and did it. And the same as in prior years, Mr. Litback is not compliant with many fire code issues and has made it very clear to us in the past that he has no interest in complying with them or making the needed improvements and maintenance to his store to become become compliant with those issues. The biggest one is his fire alarm and sprinkler system is been found to be out of date and not serviceable several times. In 2021, in October, he was inspected. Those issues were noted. And he was re inspected in December. He's still not complied with any of that. In February, by February of 22, he did have a sprinkler company come in after the after the sprinkler system was fixed after it had broken and got it up to date at that time, but it is again since fallen out of compliance. And then the alarm system, he has not had the monitoring for that. He has not had a company monitor that since by his estimation was 2006. So I noted those violations as well as many more. I noted 19 violations in all for this inspection. Again, some of them are smaller things that are very common, like the fire extinguishers being out of date. People typically just miss their inspection and get that fixed by the 30 day renewal and then we go back and re inspect it and it's good to go. I don't foresee him becoming compliant with most of these issues. We will follow the re inspection schedule and go back in 30 days and check and follow the schedule after that, but I don't foresee him doing this monitoring. By his own words, you know, he just doesn't see it being worth paying the 60 bucks a month to have it monitored, which is the standard. It's what we would expect of any business in the city. So for that reason, recommending that you do not renew his liquor license.
Questions for Blake? The entertainer motion to approve the.
Do you have a question? Are these violations? Anything that could cause him to lose an occupancy permit or anything else beyond the alcohol permit?
That is something after the, after we go through the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, re inspection schedule that we have that we are going to evaluate at that time.
Okay. Have you had that conversation with him? So he's aware. I just would want to make sure that. You know.
Right. I don't.
It's not a surprise.
I don't think we have had that particular conversation. We'll see how if any progress is made in the re inspections at all and then go from there.
Is this the owner of the entire building or just that side? So it's the other half too that.
Yeah, he owns the entire building. The other half of it's vacant.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I share concerns there there as well. When you drive by it, you know, there seems to be a the aesthetics of it are very challenging. If you've driven by it, the awnings are torn. There just seems to be very little upkeep put into this. The other salon that is out of his other side has been vacant for some time. I really have some concerns about the upkeep and the aesthetics of the building, as you probably noted, as you went by there too. If you get a chance, take a look at that. It's it's on the, it it's, it's going in a direction that I don't think is good for the neighborhood.
Anyway, I'd entertain your motion to approve the license renewal.
Obviously, real quick, I I would second what Susan was saying as far as letting him know the next time you're out there, you know, hey, this could lead to this next set actions.
Yep. And he is, he has made that statement to me that basically go ahead and close me because I can't afford to do the maintenance on this place. So.
So Mr. Mayor, a motion on this then to go with the recommendation of staff would be a no vote. Right. After making the.
Putting it on the table.
Job approved retail alcohol license renewal, European Flavors, Inc.
Second. Motion second to approve the alcohol license renewal. Further questions with the camp? What is working? Okay, prove it to me. Vote, council. The motion to approve the alcohol license renewal fails by a vote of zero to five. Thank you for that. Eobines lives.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, the AA1 bond rating has been affirmed by Moody's. Following our rating call, I'm going to ask Suzanne to come up from PFM to lead us in the details regarding our sale today. Very exciting. While she's a, come up here, I also wanted to thank PFM, but also Dorsey and Whitney and staff that have helped get us to our bond sale today. So, hi Suzanne.
All right. So we received bids today on 4.9 million general obligation urban renewal bonds 2023B. These will, these were structured as 15 year bonds payable by TIF increment revenues in both Polk and Dallas County. And will, and are funding certain urban remodel projects, including City Hall and library renovations. We received six bids today from 38 different banks. True interest cost ranging from 4.30% to 4.44% on the six bids today. The winning bid was received from Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis, Minnesota bidding in syndicate with Cantor Fitzgerald out of New York, New York. Those, the cover bid today came from Baird with its very large 32 member selling syndicate out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The winning bid from Piper was at 4.30% and the cover bid from Baird was at 4.32%. So just 0.02% between the first and the second place bid and just 14 basis points between the first and the last place bid today. So very tight pricing, very indicative of the strong credit rating for Clive today. We are using a new scale to price against. PFM has moved away from the old MMD scale to now the BVAL scale. The BVAL scale is the Bloomberg market scale that's used that includes more secondary pricing, more on date. We get hourly updates. PFM is choosing a market leader position to go to BVAL. You'll also note that the Iowa Finance Authority is using BVAL now to quarterly. We reassign the, the interest rates charge in the Iowa SRF program. So the SRF is also now using the BVAL scale. So based on the BVAL scale today, 29 basis points over the AAAA scale, which is good pricing. As the rates start to rise, we see wider spreads. So the AAAA to the AA1 today for bank qualified bonds was 29 basis points over the 15 years. So very good pricing. Any questions for me? And I don't know if Matt, if you have anything else you wanted to add. Okay.
Again, it's indicative of the market. I looked back when we sold bonds back in the spring and I think those sold for about 3.1. So just to give you an indication of where the, the Fed rate changes and how that's driving the bond market right now. And we anticipated it, we planned for it in this bond issue, but just gives you an idea in six months' time, the spread.
And almost 40 basis points in the last month. We've seen rates increase. So, yeah.
All right. What we're looking for is a resolution.
Reapproval.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And if possible, host the vote. And that passes by a vote of five, zero. Thank you. Matt, let's talk about water.
Yep. I'll pop up here.
Oh, he had a purpose. I thought he just came along.
Of course he had a purpose. So tonight, Mayor, council members, we're bringing back the Central Iowa Water Works discussion. Again, this has been a discussion over a number of years. And this is really the next step in the process. So in the packet I shared with you all, the latest draft, I called it the third draft and the near final draft, as I called it, in that, in that document or in the agenda packet, because it isn't quite final yet. You can switch it over now. And then Matt can drive. And so what we have tonight is an update. So we're now at the point where the founding members of Central Iowa Water Works need to be basically indicated and finalized to allow the team that is putting the 2000 EF together to lock in the water capacity tables in the agreement. Terms of what's the water capacity that's going to be allocated across all the founding members, including the utilities that are also selling a number of assets into Central Iowa Water Works. So we thought at the same time would be very appropriate is the last time, last time Matt was here, he kind of laid out at, at that time, what we saw the financial projections would be for Clive rate payers in terms of whether this makes sense or not for Clive. At that time, it very much made sense for Clive to be a founding member. Again, we have excess purchase capacity. We're getting compensated for that purchase capacity. It's also putting us in a position to not having to pay in a bunch like some other founding members are having to do as a part of this. And so when you look at rates and Matt will kind of run through the numbers, it's still very financially advantageous for Clive rate payers to be a part of this agreement. And so the action tonight is a resolution of intent to participate. So that would be shared then with all the members so that they can, we can finalize the 2000 EF. There's still an action left to do, which is the final action of approving the actual 2000 EF agreement. And also at that time, or as a part of the mayor appointments cycle in December, is starting to identify who the board member is going to be for Clive, primary and an alternate. And I would like take a minute for us tonight to talk a little bit about that of where that might be. I know I've discussed it a little bit with the mayor because then we would, I would offer that it'd be good to come back in the December list to have that set established. And then when the board sits at some point in 2024, we've already got that determined. So that is another ask that's a part of it. We don't have to finalize that tonight, but. So the resolution of intent and then likely we're hearing that hopefully by the end of November, we'll have a final, final 2000 EF that either your December or your first January meeting, we would bring the full agreement forward for adoption. So that is kind of the logistics of where we're at in this process. And then I'll have Matt walk through the kind of financial projections and updated to what we know at this point.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Matt said, my name is Matt Stuff. I work with PFM Financial Advisors and we have been engaged by the city to kind of help navigate the Central Iowa Water Works decision on this, on behalf of the city of Clive. So I'm really here to help answer your questions, what, what questions you have from a financial perspective as it relates to Central Iowa Water Works. I've prepared a few slides that just kind of, I think, hit at the executive level summary of what's in the 2080 and kind of how the new Central Iowa Water Works will be different from the city purchasing from Des Moines Water Works under the purchase capacity contract. So here's the table of contents. So I've got the timeline there. I won't necessarily read it. The mandatory rate setting principles. The Central Iowa Water Works revenue requirements to give a sense of the size of this agency, the, the preliminary cost allocations to Clive compared to currently the rate projections and then just some, some final thoughts for the, for the council to consider. So this is the timeline and I really just kind of put it from today until the commencement of Central Iowa Water Works. Matt kind of already highlighted a lot of this, but you know, Central Iowa Water Works is looking for a response by November 15th for the, the current interested member agencies. And then they hope to finalize the 2080 and then name the board early 2024 with commencement, January 1, 2025. That's the current timeline. You know, there's, we're trying to get 12 communities to kind of all consider all these actions in, in unison. And so I would say it's in flux, but this is what the desired timeline is. So the mandatory rate setting principles for, for my, I've read too many versions of the 2080 already, but this to me is the most important table in the whole thing. And you'll see it back on page like 91 or 92. But it's essentially how Central Iowa Water Works is going to allocate the costs in the future. And so, you know, it's a relatively complicated table, but I'll try to simplify it a little bit. There's this principle in, in rate setting for water that's called the base extra capacity method. And the base is essentially identified as how much of the, of the water producing assets are used on a daily basis. And then how much of the water producing assets are just used to make, to meet those peak demands like during the summertime. And so the base is defined by, you know, how much, take it, take the average, divide it by the max. And what percentage of, of the average is made up in the max? And so currently about 55% of the assets are used on a daily basis and 45% of the assets are used just to make the peak demand. So then we take those, we take that 55% and we allocate the fixed cost of operation, the organizational cost, the joint capital, the debt service, and we allocate that to the average day. And that really benefits Clive because you generally have a higher peak than some other communities. And so you're a peaking community is what they would call it. So the higher the average, the better for Clive because you pay a lower percentage of those costs as opposed to the extra capacity cost is the 45% are then allocated to those other, those same exact costs and it's just kind of broken out. In addition, the base cost is the variable cost. So the chemicals, the cost of the electricity to pump the water. And so the base cost is going to be based on a unit cost per million or per thousand. And that's going to be charged at a variable rate. So this is a big change from what you pay now because right now you pay a variable rate to Des Moines Water Works. So they set water at, I think, 339. It's going to go to 359 here in April. And, you know, you sell, you buy water at that, but you don't buy water until somebody turned their water, turned their faucet on. And you, you essentially sell water and buy water at the exact same time. So you, you've kind of got your margin locked in. You know, and so, you know, you're, you're not incurring a bunch of costs unless you sell water from a, from a cost of water perspective. In the future, you're going to start paying a fixed fee. So about a million dollars a year, whether you sell water or not. And so that can really benefit Clive in a dry year where you're selling a ton of water because your margin is going to be a lot more on that water. But in a wet year where you don't sell as much water, your, your cost per thousand is going to be a lot higher because those fixed costs are there whether you sold the water or not. So it's just, it's going to be a mind, it's going to be a mind, mindset shift for Clive. And you'll probably need to look at your rate structure to see, does our rate structure fit the new realities under Central Iowa Water Works? And I would encourage you to, to wait until it's finalized and the 2080 is signed and, you know, we've got a, we've got a little time to kind of really realize what this is like, but, but this table is going to essentially dictate, you know, how costs get allocated to the city of Clive. So spend some time on it, read it, understand it, ask questions about it, but it's, it's extremely important from, from my perspective.
I could add to that. So our sewer utility is essentially set up like that where it has a, an availability fee, which is, covers a good portion, not all of it, but a good portion of the fixed costs that we have with the WRA. The WRA, there, there's some similarities there, but there's also some differences between that model and how this model is being set up. But it will afford us again, as Matt alluded to, once the dust settles from the transition that we'll want to evaluate and start looking at our cash flow models of likely recommending to you all a similar structure for again, the normal water rate. I'm not talking about the irrigation piece. And again, that's why we tend to be a higher peaker is because of our irrigation usage. I know we've had that discussion and made changes to our irrigation rate to go to that tiered system. This is looking at that base rate. So that base rate, you'll likely see a recommendation in the future in a few years of all right, now going to an avail, basically an availability fee. A lot of communities do it based on meter size. You don't have to do it on that. There's a lot of different ways to do it. Where you have availability fee and then the per thousand gallon usage to basically hedge against that, you know, potential wet year versus dry year. And that's the risk that, that's the, the one piece of this. You know, going to Central Iowa Water Works right now, as Matt alluded to, is, you know, with Des Moines Water Works, it's again, we pay for it as we use it. Now under Central Water Works, that dynamic is changing. Again, it's all manageable. You just have to have a rate structure that adjusts to it. And we can definitely get there in the future. It's just, you're, we're, we're basically now becoming an owner and a board member. And so you take on more risk. Whereas right now, Des Moines Water Works is taking on all that risk. That makes sense.
Yeah. And, and in a dry year, they're reaping all the benefit because they're selling a lot of water at a big margin that they essentially budgeted based on a smaller, you know, wet year. And so, but you'll, you'll share in that risk reward here in the future if, if you, if the city decides to join. So.
Fill our pool more often.
Nice comment. So it may look like I tried to fit as many small numbers on this sheet page as I could and it's not really.
We will share this out to the council following this meeting.
Yeah.
Zoom in if you want.
But, you know, I think if you go to the bottom line, you know, the size of, the size of Central Iowa Water Works is about 70 million. And then as the Sailorville treatment plant kind of comes online, which is year five, there's a, there's a 10, 10 MGD expansion. That's $160 million is currently being considered in the 2080. You know, the size of this agency gets up to about $90 million a year budget, you know, so you compare that to the WRA, which is 50. You know, it gives you a sense of it's not quite double, but it's, it's, you know, approaching that from the size. And this, this sheet really works through the mechanics of the, you know, that, that previous table. So if I go to the bottom and you look at the variable cost, that's 16.2 million. That's in the base cost. So that, that comes just 100% up, up to that line. But then if you look at the fixed cost of operating leases, it's 26.9 and about about 55% of that cost is showing up as a variable, variable cost or a, or a base cost. And about 12 million of that or 45% of that is showing up as a fixed cost. So you, you, you run through that logic on all of them. And then you say, okay, the total base cost is $45 million. The region sells about 20 billion gallons of water a year. So they need to charge $2.21 per thousand to recover the, the base costs. And everybody will pay that exact same rate based on the mandatory rate setting principles. And then, and then the amount of water you purchase is then different by every community, but the unit cost is the same. The same happens with the extra capacity where you add up all those extra capacity. You say, what's the max day demand for the region? It's 102 million gallons. And so you divide the 23 million by the 102 and you get to this 20, $228,000 per MGD. And so then depending on what your max day demand is, your five year average, that's the fixed cost that Clive will pay. So you know, and then these next two are really the, the participation in Sailorville expansion. The debt service on that is projected to be almost $13 million. 9% of that cost is going to be allocated to your system capacity. So everybody will pay regardless of if they're getting capacity from the expansion. And then 91% of that is based on who's growing, how much are they growing? How much of that expansion do they need? And they'll pay that 91% directly.
And that's a benefit for Clive in the long term, just like we've had with the WRA, where, where we're at as a community is different than these other cities where they're going to continue to grow and the water demand is going to continue to grow with them. We're going to hit a stabilization point, just like we have with the WRA. And so our percentage of the whole will either stay flat or decline. And that is an advantage to us because right now we're about, what, what this allocation for us will be about roughly 4.5 MGD would be our capacity allocation. We'll be able to, it'll inch up a little bit with the Sailorville expansion. That just kind of gives you a sense of, and we had bought in originally almost, you know, 15, 20 years ago at 6.98, way higher than we needed. So we're going to be a little bit tighter on our capacity, but also have the ability to grow that slowly over time. And then that will also affect future rate structures and other conversations.
Yeah. And unlike Des Moines Water Works now, where if you exceed your capacity one day out of the whole year, you're penalized at that. You get three days and it's the fourth day under Central Iowa Water Works that really triggers, you know, an additional charge. So you know, if you have a main break, you know, and you have, and you buy a lot more water that one day, it's not necessarily going to penalize you, but you know, the fourth day, that's when the charges start kicking in. So that's a, I think that's a, a benefit or not a benefit, but an improvement on the current system. So then these are the Clive's allocation and you can see the 221 unit cost, the 20, the 228,000. You know, those just come straight from that page. They're calculated based for the region and then they're allocated to everybody. The annual demand then is unique to you. So, you know, we can't project what your annual demand is going to be, but based on, on past history, I've got 688 million gallons for the year. You know, that would, that would generate about a $1.5 million cost to, to the city. And then the, the fixed cost, your five year average max data man is at 3.941. So that would generate about $900,000 worth of cost. You would pay that $900,000 whether you bought a gallon of water or not. But, but the more you buy, the, the lower unit cost that goes. And then the next two are the, the participation in Sailorville. So currently, you know, Clive is projected to, to participate in Sailorville to, to a small degree. Those numbers are still being finalized based on who's participating. And then some communities are saying, we don't want all the capacity that's been allocated to us. So that's kind of, that's currently in flux. And so these numbers are intended to kind of be representative of what they might be like, but not necessarily exact at this point.
To that point, real quickly, I just wanted to give the council a sense of, of what I intend to. To that point, real quickly, I just wanted to give the council a sense of, of, of what I intend to respond back to on that particular point is, Clive will take as much allocation as we can get, because this MGD is going to be a whole lot cheaper than a capacity project ten, fifteen years down the road. And we're still in our growing phase, whereas we'll be done growing when those future capacities, uh, growth projects come online. And those will be a lot more expensive per MGD than what we're at. Now, we won't get a lot allocated to us, because it's still, there's still a percentage basis in terms of the, the demand. But if we can inch out another point two, point three MGD on our allocation, it makes sense to do it now at a much cheaper rate than it will be fifteen years down the road.
Those cities that are giving up their allocation today, are they really giving up an allocation that they can sell, so an asset today? Or they just say we're passing, wouldn't they be better off buying it today and then selling it to somebody tomorrow?
Yeah, it doesn't really work like that though in the Central Iowa Water Works. Because if you do buy it and then it's not like you can sell it to the highest bidder, like you can purchase capacity today. There's a mechanism that says if somebody wants to give back capacity in the future, then that goes back into the pot and it gets redistributed to all those that want to participate in future growth.
That's been a strategy in the past, hasn't it, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, where, where we're at with our six point nine eight. I mean, if this doesn't come along and we're under the same purchasing, purchase capacity and range with Des Moines Water Works, we definitely could have been on the table for selling allocations. We're essentially selling it to Central Iowa Water Works. So that, don't get me wrong, we're still selling, selling our excess capacity and getting, and getting value for it. And that was part of our goal from the very beginning. Some are selling physical assets like the utilities, um, which is a much bigger price tag. But yeah, this changes that purchase capacity dynamics, which I think is an advantage for us in the long run. Because we won't necessarily, we've already sold our excess capacity and getting the value for it and getting right sized into the group. And then knowing that we're not going to grow as much going forward. So it doesn't, um, preclude us unless we can inch out a little bit more capacity to go any further than we really need to.
But we're at the table today almost as a producer, right? As our seat today. In a unique position because of our capacity.
You're not technically considered a producer, but you're, you're being recognized as having made more financial investments in the water producing assets than say a Johnston who has no purchase capacity.
Yeah, we, we are, we're kind of, we're in a very unique position out of all the founding members, um, for that person, yeah, another unicorn. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, so, so, so this starts to distill it down and just, just put it in, in, in the context of Clive. So I've got the dollars here, um, and then the, the variable cost versus the fixed cost. Because right now, you know, you, you guys recover your costs a hundred percent variable. And so that, you know, you're going to incur at least forty percent of your cost probably is fixed. Um, and so, and that will change based on how much of the average, you know, the base extra capacity method will affect that number. But, but this gives you a sense of, you know, right now you're purchasing water at three dollars and thirty-nine cents. You know, when, if, if Central Iowa plays out the way it's, it's written in the twenty eighty, then you'd buy water at two dollars and twenty-one cents. But then you'd also pay a, a monthly fee of the, the seventy-six thousand, so. And this just gives you a sense of, you know, the water cash flow, kind of the way we currently have it built in. You know, I have started, we have started to work on a Central Iowa Water Works version of this, where kind of Des Moines Water Works goes through. You know, your fiscal twenty-five will be, will be weird, because six months will be Des Moines. And then six months will be, be that Central Iowa Water Works. So, you know, that'll come up in your, in your discussion for the, um, for the fiscal twenty-five budget when you have that, you know, the, later this spring.
It's an important thing to note, so one thing that's in the twenty eighty F is they're going to be setting rates on calendar year basis, not our fiscal year. So we're going to have a blended rate recommend, and we do that now today, because Water Works, uh, Des Moines Water Works changes their rate on April first, if I recall. So we've always done that and the cash flows blended those two months or those three months, April, May and June. But now it's a full six months, so that'll be, we, we still intend to present the rate, uh, proposals to you at the same time. Because it need, so it matches up with WRA and, and kind of the stormwater discussions in the budget. But just know that we'll be doing some, some math on the backend to make that six-month transition work. But everything we're seeing right now is, um, and Matt will share this on the last slide is, it could be half the rating increases that, under our status quo arrangement to be a part of Central Iowa Water Works.
Why not have that rate change fiscal than calendar, when I would imagine every ci- city that belongs to this is fiscal.
Not the three, not the three utilities.
We sat in a room and we mapped this out in excruciating detail.
Should we redo it?
Let me finish, McCoy. And one of the things that we run into at the WRA, who's on a fiscal year, is they do their budget in February. And they give you the budget in February. And almost every city has already adopted their budgets. And so it's kind of like, thanks, WRA, this would have been nice three months ago. And so now, if Central Iowa Water Works does it on a calendar year, they'll have to give you their budget in October or, or November, and then you'll have that in, you still won't know the back half of the year. But it seems like it was a better timing for the cities if they were on a calendar year. And then it, it actually is harder for the producers, because the producers have a budget calendar now. And they've got to essentially get their budget done two months ahead of time, because now Central Iowa Water Works has to approve their budget before they can finalize it. So it wasn't easy for the producers, Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works. But we felt like it was the better scenario for the, for the other cities to do it on a calendar year. So it, neither way was going to be perfect, uh, but it seemed like a better trade-off, so.
Well, there's another agency that produces their fiscal in December.
I know, but not everybody's a unicorn and perfect and does everything.
It's our financial planner, that is. I think he represents.
Okay. So just high-level observations, these numbers are based on the twenty twenty-three budgets for Des Moines Water Works, West Des Moines Water Works. The oth- the other two producers are Grimes and Polk City, and they're based on their twenty-four bud, or their fiscal twenty-four budget. So, you know, as we move into the, to the next phase of these numbers, Des Moines is going to have a twenty-four budget. West Des Moines is going to have a twenty-four budget, Grimes and Polk City are going to have a twenty-five budget, those numbers will continue to evolve. The other thing that will change is this is based on a five-year average, and so it's based on twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two right now. Eighteen will drop off, twenty-three will come on, you know, when you see this again, uh, next year. So right now, the way, the way it sits, Clive is at a three point three eight three for average day. That's how, that's what percentage of Clive makes up of the whole region. And you can, if you compare that to the max day, you're at three point eight five four. So you essentially have a higher max day, you know, on average, you're higher than the, you know, you're a peaking community and it shows it right between those two numbers, because the max percentage is higher. Initial capacity and allocated growth are an indication that Clive's not growing as fast as the other communities. So the initial capacity, you know, you're not going to have your average day percentage is going to be lower on the initial capacity, because others are planning for growth fa- at a faster rate than you are. Um, and then the allocation of growth, this is essentially what you're participating in for the, the Saylorville. That number will change as different communities push capacity in Saylorville back in. The other thing that's been, that's gotten a lot of attention and a lot of, uh, discussion is this asset transfer. And currently, we have this modeled with assets as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Because those assets are known, they're, they've been audited, you know, we can point to those numbers. You know, the asset transfer costs are not going to be determined until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, which won't be known until fiscal twenty-five. So for communities that are making a payment to Central Iowa Water Works, or in your case, may potentially receiving a payment, you won't get that until a year after those assets have been determined. You know, so, so mid twenty twenty, probably June twenty twenty-six is where you would see any settlement of, either you pay in or you have a, a payment. So you get, you'll get a year, um, and those buying costs are SRF eligible, which we just heard back from the DNR this week. So that's, that's a good thing for, for all the other communities.
Something I'll say on that point too, is there, I've had some conversation with Des Moines Water Works about that, uh, book value of the assets of, uh, maybe with this twenty eighty actually setting it and not letting it change, uh, a year from now. So, so it doesn't feel like the numbers shifted one year into the agreement, so I haven't talked to you about that. But there is some interest in, in maybe just setting it now, so everybody's very clear on what they're paying in and what they're receiving as a part of this. So that may come in the, in the final version of the twenty eighty F.
Yeah, and I know there's a lot of attorney opinions on when assets transfer, you know, what the value of them is. You know, who can transfer them and who can't. And so I've tried to kind of let other people figure that out. But as of right now, the model shows as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And, you know, that number has been a moving target, it seems like. Because every day they add assets and they depreciate assets and, and so forth, so.
These are all their assets, hard assets.
Not, not distribute all production-related assets and all.
Reservoir.
Yes.
It goes.
Yep.
It becomes the Central Iowa Water Works asset.
Yeah.
And even ours, for example, which again, another year of depreciation, right now we're, we're getting a payment. One more year depreciation on our, um, excess capacity, we might have a slight payment in. It won't be a large number, but that's in one year, you'd appreciate, you know, because our six point nine eight MGD has been getting depreciated over a series of years since we bought it, two thousand eight.
Yeah. So the last bullet point is probably alls I would have needed to say. But, you know, from our analysis, Central Iowa Water Works provides some immediate and long-term benefit to the city of Clive. Right now, we're projecting your rates, you know, at about five percent. We build in a ten percent increase to Des Moines Water Works, because that's what they've been doing. You know, but, you, you know, I was just starting to play around with this and it, you know, I could get it down to like two, two and a half percent is kind of where the steady state was, uh, for rate increases under Central Iowa Water Works. And obviously, it's going to depend on how much water you sell, you know, all, all kinds, all, all of the inputs that go into the cash flow. But right now I see, you know, going from about five percent under the current scenario to maybe two, two and a half percent under the Central Iowa Water Works scenario, and, and you'll look at that on a year-by-year basis. But, but that's essentially what the model, the projection models are telling us currently. So, um, I think that was it, happy to answer questions or Matt, I don't know if you have some additional.
Yeah, so right now it's step of the process is a resolution of intent. And then we would come back with the formal twenty, um, F. You'll notice that there's some members, uh, that have assets, actual physical assets that are having public hearings, public meetings, because it is a transfer of a public asset, so they have to go through the public hearing process that's in, um, state code. Uh, we are not in that scenario, so.
And entertain a resolution, so moved.
Second.
Post a second on the resolution, just for further discussion. Being done with the council, please vote, and with clerk, please post it. And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, Jeff, you're up next with, uh, some encouraging information about our stormwater plan.
Mayor Council, glad to be here tonight. City Clive previously entered into an agreement with Iowa State University to assess the effectiveness of our post-construction stormwater ordinance. Over the past few years, uh, various people have been working with us to collect that data. And, uh, they have now finished that report, copy of that report is in your folder. Tonight we have with us a PhD candidate, Lulu Dickey, uh, who's going to come up here and give you an overview of the findings of that report. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jeff, and hello, council members. Uh, my name is Lulu Dickey and I am here with Dr. Chris Raymond from Iowa State University to share the results of our study to assess the effectiveness of Clive Stormwater Ordinance for meeting water quantity goals. So as you know, over the past few decades, Clive has been rapidly growing, going from mostly agricultural land to an urban center with lots of residential and commercial development. And as a result of that development, there has been some concern about increased runoff into Walnut Creek. And because of that, Walnut Creek Watershed Master Plan was developed. As a part of that master plan, several priorities were identified, and those include post-construction stormwater management and topsoil management and restoration. So to meet the goals of that Walnut Creek Watershed Master Plan and to comply with federal regu- regulations, Clive adopted a stormwater management ordinance in twenty sixteen. So along with that ordinance, a stormwater management manual was developed. Requirements of the management manual include topsoil preservation or restoration of at least four inches minimum. And goals of the stormwater management manual are to mimic natural hydrology or pre-development conditions, reduce peak flow and reduce associated nutrient sediment pollution. So the goal of our study is to understand and demonstrate the extent of benefits from the ordinance. Um, and so to do that, we're going to compare two neighborhoods. The first neighborhood is Angel Park, that's our control neighborhood that was built before the ordinance. The second neighborhood that we're comparing to is Shadow Creek, which was built in accordance with the ordinance standards. Zooming in a little bit more on these two study sites are both located in the northwest area of Clive. And they are similar in size, although Angel Park is a bit smaller at fifty-eight acres versus Shadow Creek at sixty-seven acres. They have similar amounts of impervious surfaces as well. Um, in Angel Park, we do have one stormwater management practice, and that is a dry detention basin shown in brown on the map. Um, and that is where all of the stormwater runoff from that neighborhood will go before it's finally discharged to Walnut Creek. Now, looking at Shadow Creek, we do have more stormwater managements, uh, practices throughout this neighborhood. So there are infiltration practices throughout the whole neighborhood, and that would include the soil quality preservation and restoration. There is also a bio-retention cell that was partially completed at the time of our study. And finally, shown in blue on the map, that is a wet detention pond. And that is where all of the stormwater runoff from Shadow Creek will go before it's discharged to Walnut Creek. So looking at the outlets for each of these basins, in Angel Park, we have a pretty simple outlet structure. That's just a single-stage, single-orifice outlet. Whereas in Shadow Creek, we have a more heavily engineered outlet structure, you can see with multiple orifices and multiple stages that can let more flow out as the water level increases. So to compare the neighborhoods, we needed to, um, take some field measurements. So we measured flow, water level and precipitation at our two study sites. And the next thing that we did was we developed hydrologic models of each neighborhood, and we did this using a software called PC Swim. In the model, we have to represent runoff processes. And so the method that we use to represent those processes is called the curve number method from NRCS. That is a commonly used method for urban hydrology. What you need to know about the curve number is that higher curve numbers correspond to more runoff. So if we have a curve number of one hundred, that would be something like a road where all of our rainfall is going to runoff. And generally, the goal of stormwater management is to take our post-development, um, conditions and try to get them back as close as we can to the pre-development condition. So using our field data, we went ahead and calibrated and validated the models that we built. Um, these are the results of our calibration and validation. The way that we measure model performance is with a metric called the Nash-Sutcliffe efficiency. So a Nash-Sutcliffe efficiency of one is a very good or best performance. And we can see that both of these models performed well, but Shadow Creek actually did perform better. And that is likely due to the fact that we had a detailed stormwater management plan that we could use to develop the model. Taking our validated and calibrated models, we got, went ahead and modeled some design storms. So we did three storms ranging from a smaller one-year storm up to our more extreme one-hundred-year storm. We also wanted to look at the performance of those two basins. So if you recall, at Angel Park, we have the dry detention basin, and at Shadow Creek, we have the wet detention pond. And that is something that we can look at with our model, so we can, uh, calculate how much flow is coming into those final basins versus going out to Walnut Creek. The next thing that we did with our model was we looked at real precipitation data. So we're looking at three years, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And we really only want to focus on precipitation and not snowfall, so we're looking at the months between May and October. So moving now into results, this is the first result from our model calibration. And we're going back to that curve number that I talked about earlier. So what we can see here is that Shadow Creek, which is our neighborhood that was built in accordance with the ordinance, actually has, um, a better post-development curve number than Angel Park. So Shadow Creek is getting closer to that pre-development condition. And what that shows is that the infiltration practices used at Shadow Creek were effective. Now we're looking at our one-year design storm, can zoom in a little bit to the hydrograph so you can see more clearly. Um, if we look at the dotted lines, those represent those flows into the final basin. So we have Angel Park in red and Shadow Creek in blue. And comparing the two dotted lines, we can see that Shadow Creek had lower flows, which is another sign that the infiltration practices are effective. Now, if we look at the solid lines, again, Angel Park is in red and Shadow Creek is in blue. We can see the final outflows to Walnut Creek. And so for this design storm, Shadow Creek had lower outflows. So that means again, that wet pond is very effective in attenuating flow. Looking at the larger design storms, this is the 100-year more extreme storm. Zooming in again to the hydrograph, there are some similarities here. So if we look at those two dotted lines again, that's the flow into the final basins. We see that Shadow Creek has lower flows than Angel Park. So another good sign that our infiltration practices are working. Now comparing the two solid lines, we see a difference here. And we see that Shadow Creek in blue actually has higher flows. And the reason for this is because of the simplistic outlet structure at Angel Park. That actually kind of constrains the flow. And so that's why you see that lower flow rate at Angel Park rather than Shadow Creek. So now we're going to look at the real storm events that occurred. We just wanted to characterize what occurred over our study period. Remember that was 2019, 2020 and 2021. So most of our storm events that occurred, we, we grouped these by duration and total precipitation. And most of them were rather short storms in the three or six hour categories and rather small storms of less than one inch. Remember that we design based off of 24-hour storms, but in this study period, we only had two real storms that were in that 24-hour category. So we're going to look at one of those storms. This is a 26-hour storm that occurred in May of 2019. And this is a very good example that shows the effectiveness of the practices at Shadow Creek. So again, Shadow Creek is shown in blue and Angel Park in red. You can see that for the entire duration of the storm, Shadow Creek had lower peak flows. And if you look at that falling limb of the hydrograph, you can see how the wet detention pond slowly released that water over time. And that's what we want with our stormwater practices. Now we're going to look at a more intense storm. So this is a shorter storm event. This occurred in June of 2020. And what we see is that this storm actually produced higher flows at Shadow Creek. And this could be because of two reasons. First of all, even if we have very effective infiltration practices. If the intensity of the rainfall is higher than the infiltration rate of the soil, we're still going to see more runoff. Secondly, Shadow Creek also has the multi-staged outlet structure. So as more flow enters that pond, the flow rate is actually going to go up. So that's why we see these higher flows. And then we're going to summarize. So these are all of the storm events that occurred over our study period, and we wanted to look at the maximum peak flow rate. So again, we've grouped these by the total precipitation amount and the storm duration. So looking at this, we can see that for all storms, as the, the duration of the storm increases, the peak flow rate decreases, which makes sense because those are less intense storms. And if we look particularly at the 24-hour storms that occurred, those are in the 1.5 and greater precipitation category. We actually see that Shadow Creek, even though it's larger in size, has lower peak flow rates than Angel Park. And that makes sense because the practices at Shadow Creek were designed specifically to treat those longer duration storm events. So they are effectively doing that. All right. Finally, the last thing that we wanted to look at was flow volume. So how much flow left for each storm event? And again, because these neighborhoods are different in size, we needed to normalize this so that we could compare them. So what we've done is calculated the total outflow volume for each storm and then divided it by the area of each neighborhood, which gives us discharge depth in inches. And so that the main thing that we can take away from this figure is that even when we have the same amount of precipitation, we can have variation in total outflow. And that really is because of the duration of the storm and also the distribution of the rainfall over the storm period. So wrapping up our key takeaways from this study, first, we found that documented stormwater management plans helped to evaluate stormwater practice performance. And that was a result of our model calibration and validation when we saw better performance at Shadow Creek. Secondly, we found that soil quality practices that were required by the ordinance were effective in mimicking pre-development conditions at Shadow Creek. And that was shown by the curve number. We also found that the stormwater management at Shadow Creek was effective in attenuating peak flow rate and time to peak for the 24-hour design storms. Even though the dry detention basin at Angel Park was not designed according to the ordinance standards, it is very effective in handling larger and more intense storm events. And finally, recommendations for design. So for designing stormwater practice, stormwater management practices. We recommend potentially considering shorter and higher intensity storms, especially with climate change, making these more likely to occur. And then finally, making sure that we combine the infiltration practices with detention and retention practices. So that we can optimize for both low intensity and high intensity storm events. Thank you. I can take questions.
Questions.
So. When you say combining detention and retention practices, are, are you saying kind of combining the dry detention basin from Angel Park with the, what we did at, at Shadow Creek? Is that basically what you're saying?
That's a good question. So actually I think both of those basins were effective. So either a dry detention or a wet detention basin would be an effective practice. The basin at Angel Park is a little unique. It's, it's very large. I've never seen one that large myself. I don't really know the history because it wasn't designed with the ordinance. So I don't have a detailed stormwater management plan. But I would still say that the wet detention pond at Shadow Creek is effective. So even combining that type of practice with infiltration practices would be effective.
And do you know if there were any variables that we were unable to account for that, that could have made the difference between Angel Park and Shadow Creek? And anything that we.
Oh, absolutely.
Include within the study.
Yeah. So it's, it's hard sometimes to do these paired watershed studies. I mean, not everything is going to be the same. And so that's why it's hard to make the direct comparison between these two neighborhoods. You know, you can't control for everything in the field. And of course, that large dry detention basin at Angel Park kind of, I guess, made it more difficult to compare. But I think we can still see the takeaways and how effective the practices at Shutter Creek were. But yeah, there, there was difficulties in, in direct comparison for sure.
For example, you could have had a, especially in the Angel Park one, that big outlet structure could have, one of the storms could have got blocked with something. And slowed, you know, could have changed, had a variability in the, the, the meter that's actually in the pipe that they're using for this data.
You had mentioned that there was a peak, like the peak flow in Shadow Creek was higher during one of the rain events. And you know, you're, I think you're, uh, your statement was that it was because the, you know, even if you have infiltration practices, if the water exceeds that, it's still going to run out. Is there, is there any recommendation as far as what is that number? What is that? Is it duration? Like, I know it could be either duration or intensity.
Right. Um, so are you asking for design purposes? What, what should we use? So that's a good question. I don't know that I particularly have the answer. What I have seen so far in some other states and cities. Is that one thing that they are thinking about doing is considering what's called the storm of record. And so that would actually be looking at real precipitation time series data. And then taking a, a major storm. So for example, in Des Moines, that might be like the 2018 storm. And then running that through the modeling as well when we're designing, but that, that's just one approach. You know, it's hard because you have to choose something. And so I don't think that design storms are a bad approach. I just think maybe we need to be thinking about some of these shorter duration storms as well.
Thanks.
Couple of takeaways. It sounds like the, that the outlet, the newer outlet at Shadow Creek versus Angel Park, larger, has more capacity, was able to filter out the water better than the smaller one that was before the standards, Angel Park. Second observation would be, it's interesting that we talk about the wet retention pond, how that was better at, at relocating the water, not quite as quickly. It was more of a, the curve was far flatter right there. So would you recommend those practices moving forward? The, the wet over the dry, the larger output than the smaller output?
It's hard to say, but with the wet detention pond, you do actually get sometimes more water quality benefits from that in terms of nutrient reduction, especially. We didn't study that here, but that's often why wet detention pond would be used. The benefit of a dry detention basin could be that you could get maybe more infiltration going. So you can reduce the total outflow volume. But that's not always the case. It's really dependent on the soils. So I think my recommendation is basically it's very site dependent. And I think that is reflected in your current stormwater management manual.
Thank you. Councilman, if I might expand on that just a moment, the, the, each site is presents unique opportunities for doing this infiltration. It's also why the stormwater management manual, by then on the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual is written as a set of recommendations. With practices then that are science and based, evidence-based as well. And using that sort of range of what is good, you can pick the pieces that best fit for each application.
Other question.
Well, it's probably a comment. I, it's interesting to see that the infiltration practices are contributing to being helpful. Because that's the kind of thing that seems to be most under scrutiny from the legislature. In terms of limiting our ability to use those practices. So the more detail we can get on the hat, it's helpful for our conversations.
Yeah, I've become, as you all know, quite a geek when it comes to this stuff.
Oh, you are.
I walked into that. Thank you. Just wanted to throw you guys a softball. But this was the type of data that was kind of missing from some of the conversation last year. And for us now to be able to share this with sympathetic legislators to show them, no, 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 not only are these practices effective, they're also cost-effective too. If you infiltrate where it lands, using some of these soil practices, it's significantly more cost-effective than having to build very large practices other places. Pairing them together is going to produce the best results from water quantity and quality management and the best return on investment for taxpayers and developers.
I was just thinking this allows data-driven decisions and provides that, that data that really backs up what we've talked about with best practices and topsoil and those type of things.
Well, and I was going to ask, what is the next step with this? And so you're saying part of that would be with the legislature. I mean, we can go back to the developers and say, see, I told you so kind of thing. But what else are we going to do?
Right. I'll, I'll go back to legislators and say, you guys now should love this as much as we love this too. I don't want to shame them for their past obstruction. Well, because they need to be our partners. They need to be our partners in all of this. And.
Next steps.
That's right. And we focused on those next steps because there are opportunities for us to go to existing facilities in the city now. And make improvements to them so that we do keep seeing better performance. Because it's only been since 2016 that they've had the ordinance in place. A lot of Clive has developed without these practices on the ground. Now we have to think about how we can keep improving the performance of those neighborhoods too.
How do we utilize this data to share this with our neighbors and the whole metro region in, in the Walnut Creek watershed? And Susan, for you, this is great, great information to share with them that looks, this stuff works.
Mac.
Yeah, I think that's one.
I just want to make a point of the quality and the data we got from the individuals of a, of a, the professor and a PhD candidate out of Iowa State University. Duly noted. Was it not Indiana or Iowa or any of those other whatever's? It was Iowa State University that gave you that data that you can make decisions now in the future with. So thank you.
Present a question. Also with Drake University.
Let's get back to Iowa State.
Any other questions? Otherwise, thanks so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Now you can, you can stay for the meeting or you're free to go. All right, we'll move into reports. Pete.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we are preparing for the state legislature to come back into session. We had a good webinar this afternoon with the Iowa League of Cities and some discussion with staff about legislative priority options. November, we'll be bringing that document to you, all of you for consideration. We are certain that there'll be ongoing discussions about taxes, about local control, a lot of the same beats that we've heard in, in previous years. Second, I also participated in a webinar day on state and federal funding. Especially funding coming out of the infrastructure legislation that was passed in 2002. We are using that to build out our grant strategy for the coming calendar year. There are millions and millions of dollars worth of opportunities in front of us. Everything from some small opportunities like helping us make light, but energy efficiency improvements to existing facilities to massive multimillion dollar investments. That could come from something like the BRIC program to help us really knock out the remainder of the flood prone property buyout program. So good progress on that front. Finally, we'll have interviews for our, for 12 candidates that have made it through the first round for the communications specialist position. I'll be starting those tomorrow and they will continue Tuesday. And from that group, we'll whittle down to no more than five for in-person interviews and some exercises we'd like them to complete. We're on target now to, I think, identify our preferred candidate in early November. And after Matt has had a chance to review as well, make a recommendation on who that person should be. Keeps, if that all stays true to schedule, then we'll be ready to bring that person on board still in this calendar.
Very good. Anything else, Pete?
No, Your Honor.
Speaker.
Just a quick update, DART's doing its nominations for next year's executive committee. So I am part of the nominating committee. So hopefully we're meeting Monday next week. And so we should have, should have some news shortly thereafter. The, the next start meeting, general meeting, I won't be able to attend due to work, but I think Michael is going to be taking my place for that one.
I love when I come. Anything else?
That's it.
Ted.
Nothing tonight.
Eric.
It's Des Moines, CBB. Matt, here's the financial report. It was a clean audit. So we appreciate all the fine work they did. Couple of quick things. The events that brought in over 300 bookings this year brought in over $160 million to greater Des Moines area. Forty million of that was brought in by the Junior Olympics this summer.
Where was that held?
Drake Universe. So tremendous event, obviously well-attended people from all over, all over the country. So a lot of good things coming up as well. So continues to, to, to exceed expectations.
Very good.
Susan.
Well, I spent a bunch of hours reviewing Bravo grant applications, which was actually quite a pleasure. We've got some great things going on throughout the metro. And then you mentioned the Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority and attended that meeting recently in Waki. And I just have to say, there is so much good conversation happening there. And definitely Clive factors in to a lot of it in a really good way. And I can't give enough appreciation for our water resources team. And they're not here to hear me say that, but really it's pretty outstanding. Jeff, you're part of it. So thank you and please pass it on.
Anything else?
That's it.
Michael.
Do not have anything.
Okay. Anything on the legal side?
Nope, Your Honor.
Or when Neil's coming back. I'm sorry.
I did send him an email. 2024. I missed you too.
Just a few items, Your Honor. Just, I, I do need to get some feedback from you all on the Bravo Gala on February 3rd. I will not be able to attend this year, but we do need to make them aware of if the city of Clive wants to get a full table again this year. I do, we do need to give some feedback to them, let them, them know that indication before the tickets go on sale publicly later this month or in November, I think, mid-November. So please, if you know now, great, or I will note it in my weekly update tomorrow. You can reply back. That'll be February, Saturday, February 3rd. Also next week, so we do have our workshop, our CIP workshop a week from tonight. This will be, we'll actually hold that at the Clive Public Safety Center in the training room and we'll have dinner as well. Food will be available around 5:30 program. The workshop itself will start at six. So if you want to come early and eat before we get into the workshop, that will be fine. We'll have a number of things to cover related to the capital improvements plan, similar discussions as in past years. So again, that'll be a week from tonight, but at the public safety facility. In the train, in the big training room there, we'll have things on the screens. Also wanted to mention too, just thanks to everybody on the, for the time on the governance session, we'll have some follow-up documentation for you all to consider as a part of that. And for the next council meeting, regular council meeting, which will be in two weeks, on the ninth of November. We will have a presentation related to food insecurity from D-Mark, Clive Community Services and potentially the Salvation Army that all operate. Pantries in Clive. We will, I don't, I know the Food Bank of Iowa one is also one that we've reached out to, but that'll be 2024 before we get them in here. Just wanted to let you know that there'll be representatives from those entities coming to provide a brief presentation and update to you all on that. And then. And then finally, gathering at my home on Saturday, just come warmed, dressed warmly, we'll be inside as well as outside, but we can keep you warm on the patio. So see you all on Saturday evening, and I'll have those, those details are included in the weekly update as well. So so I'll have, Your Honor, unless there's any questions.
Questions for Matt? Any other items for the good of the order this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we'll adjourn at 8:10.